Okay.
Okay. Thank you all for your patience. We're doing something new this year. We're required to offer hybrid access to this meeting. So we've been struggling with tech support approach. So thank you for coming. We are here for our annual meeting. I'm Mayor Christine Lott, and I'm going to present the city's budget that you'll see on town meeting day, along with some of our, some of the other ballots in the city. So to get right to the point, the budget that you will see on the ballot this year includes a projected 3.99% tax rate increase. I'll speak in a little more detail about what that includes and the impact for Newskee households. I want to first start by grounding us in the strategic vision set by our community back in 2015, as this guides all of our work as a city. These themes still ring true today. Residents are concerned about maintaining our economic vitality, ensuring the mix of quality and affordable housing, investing in our infrastructure, and fostering safe, healthy, connected people in our community. Something new this year, we wanted to get more community voice and input on our budget process. And a big shout out to our finance director, Angela Derry, for helping us facilitate a community budget survey that got 50 individual responses. And a community budget activity that has reached at least 90 people, maybe more by now, that we've been bringing out to the community to gather and put on Wolfman's Valley. As of the time we adopted the budget, the results we had seen so far were pretty affirming. Residents really do value the services they're receiving in Newskee, but are concerned about the tax rate and affordability. And so those are things that inform our decision-making. Want to share a few achievements towards that community vision that we've completed for this past year before we look forward? We've carried on several significant projects. The Main Street revitalization work has been pretty noticeable. But we've also made progress on our hotel parking and housing project and secure a financial cap on our contribution to the bridge project, which we continue to work with the state on. We have secured grant funding to do a marketing and wayfinding campaign next year to support businesses through the second year of the Main Street construction. We've obtained expanded community services programming. We've received a really good expansion on that programming. And we have launched some new important housing regulations related to the short-term housing and also some updates for zoning to target increased housing development to meet needs of the community. This is a pretty recent snapshot. Want to share some quotes here related to the Main Street project as we look towards the second year of this disruptive construction work. We received some feedback from the community members about how responsive the project team has been. So I'll just go with that. On the street level side, you can sign up for project updates to stay in the loop and also catch up with any concerns, see an issue or find something that we're worried about how our project is being managed. You can contact the project team and get back to them. So for the fiscal year 2026 budget that you will see on town meeting ballot, this is, this is not updated. I'm so sorry. The total impact. Okay, so. The average household being assessed at about $413,000, we'll see a $125 total increase for next year's tax bill on the municipal side. And the budget also includes some increases to utility rates. The total impact of that will be $52 for the whole year for the average household in Newskee. So the total impact was at 238 earlier in our process. We did some work on the utility side and it's down to $177 for the average household in Newskee. Let me dive into what's included in that. So these are the cost drivers. This budget does not propose to add new staff or programs. This is to retain what we're already delivering to the community. And the biggest contributor to that is benefits cost increase. We may be aware already that healthcare costs have increased dramatically in the state this year, and we provide healthcare to staff as part of their benefits. We have reduced the impact of that, though. Staff worked really hard to negotiate with our labor unions and cut the impact in half, saving almost $100,000 in additional expense that would have been incurred here because we've been carrying around concerns for affordability. The other big piece is salary increases for our union contracted employees. They're tied to cost of living increases. And then you carry that out for our union employees as well. And then you'll see at the end there is some inflation in the service costs of materials. The biggest part of our expense is staff who deliver service to the city. And so this is helping us obtain what we have on staff already. So this is a breakdown of what the average tax bill is paying for on a municipal side in this upcoming, in this proposed budget. You'll see the top, the largest portion is for 24/7 police dispatch, as well as our Harvard Center Community Outreach Team for social service support. That is the biggest piece because it's the only department that has staff from tomorrow's day, seven days' week. We have capital is next. This is our construction projects. Vehicles, building maintenance, things that cost, that require borrowing for significant savings and would just be on an annual yearly basis. Administration includes planning zoning, the parks office and records, finance to keep things in order for the city. Generally just helping all the areas, the other areas get their work done. Public works includes maintaining our streets and sidewalks, our buildings and facilities, engineering on some of these projects. Community services programming that includes our library, senior center, youth programs, community governments, keeping up with our parks, providing recreation programs, and of course the that we have fire and fire enforcement, which is emergency response and also building inspection for commercial and housing spaces and public spaces to make sure that we can stay safe. And then last is contracts with regional partners. So we receive some support from the Wolfman Valley Park District, Tummin's U V, who's helping keep our meetings openly accessible, the Regional Planning Commission, and pre-train transit for public transportation services in the city. So I share that there are any staff positions that will also get programs added in this budget. So beyond the, you know, increased salaries and benefits to keep what we have, we are also incurring an increase to retain our Harvard Center Community Outreach Team, the state ended some grant funding that was supporting programs. So we're thinking of that as a talent to keep that service available in the community. We're increasing our contribution to the County Congressional Planning Commission to support a shared equity policy advisor role. The city had a full-time role like this a couple of years ago. It wasn't sustainable for us to have that as a potential position. So this is a pathway to get that important service, but doing a share a lot of the funding in this. You'll see a reduction here on capital funding. There was a significant increase in capital last year. We didn't carry all of the improvements budget ever after to the affordability. But this is still a little bit more than you're required. And it does need our experience, our community sidewalk maintenance, and a couple of other small projects. We have an increase to our greenhouse transit assessment. They have heard they're having some funding issues, so to keep public bus service and accessible transportation in the community, we have that built into the budget. And then for our partners that have Tummin's U V, we have the Parks District. We have been, we've been paying our subsidies to them for many, very years and are on a plan to increase that aim and to try to catch up to what other challenges future meeting. So in that capital plan I mentioned, there are two priorities included here. One is to meet our stormwater procurement landing park. We need to do some improvements there in the parking lot for stormwater management. And then up at Gilbert Park, there is this retaining wall between the road and the body of water that you can see is not in very good condition. We need to do some structural review to see if it is still good or if we need to make sure there's a new picture. The capital plan also includes a study to investigate renovating the fire department to improve overnight bunks. So we have challenges for our recruiting and hiring in the fire department for several years now. There is like a statewide issue recruiting emergency workers. But an additional challenge we have is that we need folks who are within about a five mile drive of the fire station to be able to respond promptly to emergencies. And so we add overnight bunks to the building. We could get folks who live further out of town that are interested in working here because they can stay there in the on-site in case of an overnight call. So this is just to do a study to see what that would cost and see if we can integrate it into future plans to meet that need. Our capital plan always includes annual paving work. So this is, we actually keep a plan of the streets that are being targeted year to year. What we have planned for in FY '26 is that other die on Bellevue to do paving work there. And I'll note that the work on the seventh town proper scale for the street streets, that's going to continue. That was part of last year's bond votes to reallocate some funds to redo curves and sidewalks with that paving. So that will also continue as well as Newklee Street. We also have a sidewalk inventory that we use for planning sidewalk repairs. So generally, the goal is to include sidewalk repairs along with annual paving. So this past year, you may have seen paving work was done on Shepherd and Hall Streets, and we were able to repair the sidewalks in that area. So we tracked that here to try to make that work happen together. I also want to call out that the Main Street project will include fully replace sidewalks wider and a number of pedestrian safety improvements along that corridor, which that area, this strip of Main Street in our transportation master plan that was developed for community outreach. I think the top three areas of concern identified in the community go along Main Street. So this project is helping to meet those, those needs and concerns. So besides the budget, City and School budgets you'll see on the ballot, there will also be two council seats with two-year terms, two school board seats with two and three-year terms. The Newskee School District Treasurer, I'm sorry, the Newskee School District Treasurer, two voter back petitions. This is a local election, so I'll remind folks that all legal residents are allowed to vote in this election regardless of citizenships to us. I'm going to talk about the two voter back petitions next, but I'll stop now for any questions related to the budget.
It used to be children's transportation, the bus service. You're going to be paying them more. Are they still talking about 100,000 in Newskee? Is by the back of the day anymore?
Yeah, I think they made one run reduction already. There's a second set of reductions that would be for next year. But they are working through the state legislature trying to secure additional funding from the city to prevent those from happening. But this increase is just to retain what we have right now. There is, there is uncertainty in what that service has been like in the future.
BMP, best management practices?
Oh, best management practices?
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
No problem. Sorry, we should be avoiding evidence. Anyone else have a bunch of questions? Okay. Oh, and I'll just to confirm that no bond votes this year. So that's exciting news. We won't be presenting any votes for a little bit of time now. So voter back petitions, there's two additional items you'll see on the ballot. State statute allows that if 5% of registered city voters sign a petition, the city must place it on its next election ballot with the exception of non-binding issues. So a petition is non-binding when it feels to something that voters haven't been given explicit authority to by the state. In those cases, council has a choice on whether or not to put them on the ballot, and it did move one of those forward. So the first one you're going to see is the voter approval charter change for just cause eviction. You may recall voters approved this already in 2023. However, unfortunately, the city won in one of the public hearings outside of the statutory timeline. And so we're retaking the vote just to make sure we comply with all statutes, dotted R's and crossed T's. This charter change was already submitted to the legislature last year following that vote. So they have it. Our representatives have been advocating for it for charter changes. Even with citywide voter approval, the legislature still has the ultimate authority on those. So this is sitting with them. When and if they take action, it will come back to the city. And then we would have a process of public engagement and learn to develop ordinance and figure out how to carry that out. But I think a vote now, as I said, like this is already in the state house, but we need to do it for compliance purposes. And if it's, you know, voters approve this again, it's just a reaffirmation to share with the legislature. So the second voter back petition we have that is non-binding is related to Israel and Palestine. So the petition asks here to for voters to advise the council to adopt the following pledge in relation to apartheid-free community and opposing Israel's apartheid regime for Palestine. As I said, this is not non-binding, so there is no action that is necessary to be taken following the vote. If this is something that voters approve, it's essentially sharing, using your vote as your voice to share your opinion. I think it's something that ABC statewide, but there's no specific direct action for the local government to take followings. Any questions about either of these petitions?
For the first petition item, since it's already been approved, but compliance, I understand why you're doing that. What if it doesn't get voted as it's been?
If it wasn't voted, uh, that's a very good question.
It would be turned down. It would not go back to legislative.
It would not go back to legislative.
Even though it's already in the state house, but compliance wise, it's unfortunate.
That's a good question. Anyone else?
Just in case it wasn't clear, this one is binding.
Oh, yes, yes. So this is a binding one. We have to put this on, the second one is non-binding. So I'll just share a couple of developing issues for FY '26, things to be on the lookout for. Need our continuing work to transfer ownership of Royal Bryant Community Center to the Shankly House and Trust to manage. They are skilled and adept at managing community centers already and poised to do a better job of managing that space and bring in some more resources that the community may need. As part of that agreement, we would be able to expand our library space. The community room and community accessible spaces would be retained. We're very aligned with what the city and community's mission has been for this building. So that's something we're working towards. I already mentioned Main Street. The second year of the project is moving forward. You'll see more above-ground work as we make streetscape improvements, crosswalks, sidewalks, trees, that sort of thing. We're continuing to coordinate with the state on the bridge replacement project. The actual like construction work is slated to start until 2027, but there is a lot of planning that needs to happen in the interim. I noted earlier that recruitment has been very difficult for police and fire. That's something we're continuing to try to navigate, how to make sure that we need emergency response units in the community with the limited staff that we have. Related to that is regional dispatch. So this is something that voters approved in 2018. We, Newskee and several other communities in Chatham County wanted to come together to regionalize our dispatch service, which we provide right now and have some our own. That has been a challenging, multi-community project that we're still trying to work our way through to bring some improvements in response time and working conditions for dispatch staff. So we're going to keep, we're going to keep at that if it falls apart. If it doesn't go forward, we can look at all three approaches to make sure that we have the service needed in Newskee. And then I mentioned earlier, funding challenges for green round transit are something we're monitoring to see how that's going to impact us, be that changes to service for residents or increasing costs. And we're also monitoring the discussion around education funding because you get one tax bill from us, it's got the city and school dollars on there. So we want to be mindful of the whole picture of how folks are impacted. One last thing I want to share is this incomplete snapshot of outstanding items that we need to address. These are primarily in the category of infrastructure. So this is one of the reasons why last year we had been doing an increase to capital funding. We kept just a little bit of that this year, but may look towards doing another increase in the future. We have a lot of items that we need to get up to like maintenance, so that we're maintaining things at the right level. There were, in the past, number of years ago, there was a period of time where we just were not keeping up with funding our infrastructure and maintenance. So there is a backlog we're still working on. This isn't stuff that all needs to happen right away, but I just want to share this context in future years of why there was often an ask for more capital funding. And also just to show, there are a lot of needs in the city right now, and we can't do them all at once. We couldn't afford to do them all at once. So it's also a good context for why something that may be on your radar is concerned isn't happening as quickly as you would like to see. And then lastly, most of this is outdated now. Anyhow, voting is tomorrow, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Senior Center on 21th and Harlow Street. If you're not yet registered, you can register right when you walk in. And we'll be there, we'll have a lot of folks there all day to help out. I'll be there in a moment. Any final questions?
Fire personnel and, and, and police.
Being nearby, is that a common sense requirement or statutory or both?
I don't think it's statutory. It's, they have to get to the fire station soon, get in the truck, head out. It's a best practice that our chief wants to see to make sure we can get to a call on time.
Which may in turn reflect sistering and sistering towns and stuff. Other firefighters on the tab.
Yeah, yeah.
Firefighter that are in application.
Yeah, and I should, I should share also to those who don't know. We only have, I think, decreased full-time staff in fire. The rest of our department is like on a halt. So they're working under jobs. We frankly probably can't afford to have 24/7 full-time fire staff. And so this is one way that we kind of navigate how we can keep providing the service that the community needs in a way that's affordable, sustainable. Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over to the school board next. The song, okay, wonderful. So for the school board, yeah, for the school board, we have a moderator and a clerk to help guide this meeting as well. And I am the moderator for this year. I'm calling this meeting to order. And once I've gone through the three article items listed on the morning, I'll turn it over to the school board to give their presentation of the budget. So the first article is to elect next year's moderator and clerk. These positions technically start in on July 1st. They really only come to effect for this meeting. So there are nominations for moderator? Don't make me do it. Don't make me nominate either.
Second.
All right. I see nomination for Connor Daly, a second by Colby slash for alarm. All of them favor?
Hi.
Oh, yes.
Oh, there are other nominations? Yes. You can. Would someone like to second that motion?
Second.
All right. So we have all of, any other nominations?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, second.
All right, so do we have four? This is, this is probably the first time I've been, multiple people. All right, so. I assume we go through this, all those.
Yeah, I'd do a hand raise.
Yeah, all right. So. So the three names are Connor Daly, Emily Bowers, and Roar Heard. All those in favor, and we'll just buy hands while I'm trying, you know? To see who gets the most. Again, this is for folks for residents in Newskee, and we have some here, here, side, side too. All right, all those in favor for Connor Daly to be the next moderator? All right. Awesome. Thanks for helping. All those in favor for Emily Bowers to be the moderator for the next town meeting?
Three.
All right.
Four.
All those in favor for Roar Heard to be the moderator for the next town meeting? No.
One, two, three.
Three, okay. So the moderator for the next town meeting. So the moderator for the next town, uh, town meeting will be Connor Daly with five votes. All right, now we get to go through the fun, the fun thing with the clerk. Do we have any nominators for clerk?
Nominate Isaiah Donaldson.
All right, we have nominees for Isaiah Donaldson. Any other nominations for clerk?
I second.
All right. Well, actually, can we get a second? Awesome. All right. Uh, all those in favor for Isaiah Donaldson to be the clerk for the next town meeting? Right. Awesome. Thank you all.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Landslide went right there guys.
The next item or article is shall the district accept the twenty twenty-five annual report in all included subreports? I believe you probably received these in the mail and. Yes, the clerk has some additional copies if you'd like to review this. So can I get? Can I get a motion on shall the district accept the twenty twenty-five annual report in all included subreports? Right, can I have a second?
Second.
Yay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Awesome. And then finally, articles ready before we get to the main part of the school board. Shall the board of trustees be authorized to allow appropriate groups and agencies to use school facilities and equipment in accordance with district policy? I'll make a motion. Okay, second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Wonderful, all right, thank you all, I'll pass this over now. To our school.
Hello everyone, I'm Robert Lawrence, Chair of the School Board. Thanks for coming tonight. I'm going to go through our presentation. If you came to a community dinner or otherwise, it's basically the same presentation, so. Uh, tonight I'm going a little quicker than last night, but please raise your hand if you have any questions at any time. All right, so there's a lot of context in our presentations. Just to get started, we always start, everything we do on the school board starts with this, our end statement. Cause we're policy governance board. Uh, this takes place of a mission and vision statement. This is our goal, this is our, uh, how we judge our success as a board and as a district. Uh, and everybody was like, we're with all the students, we'll graduate from the New Skis School District College and be ready, qualified by a majority of the New Skis community. W S T students will be health productive and successful lives, gain global, global, global community. And the important thing for tomorrow, uh, qualified by a majority of the New Skis community, so I'm hoping a majority of you get out tomorrow and vote for this and bring all your friends. So let's talk about how we fund schools in, in modern, very, 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 very quickly. Uh, it is a very complex formula that's used, but an important piece of context for us, last year and this year is that they changed from, uh, what used to be called equalized pupils to what's now called weighted long-term membership. And that's why you see this, we actually have about seven hundred and eighty-seven students, see nods from staff. Um, but they're waited in the funding formula, and the way they used to be waiting, it was looking down around here. New weights went up here, which is why your tax rate last year actually dropped by ninety cents. Um, this is repraisal, only about, uh, less than half of people actually saw the decrease in, uh, the other half saw an increase in their bills. Even with that ninety cent increase. Um, why does our student population, I think it's the next, no, no. Okay, it's going to jump around a little bit, I mean, I think I remember, but now. This is another, uh, piece of important context. This is looking ahead, last year when we, we, this, this projections of student counts. Last year when we looked at this, we were looking at that blue line, we were looking at a dramatic drop over the next ten years, this projection, so. We were at the six eighty-six looking ahead of envisioning dropping less, uh, less than half of what the school was built on for. Good news, this year new projections, new ten-year projections, much flatter, still decrease though. This is something that we had, that we kept in mind, uh, why I say a lot of this is context, context we used if we built budget. Looking ahead, you know, at best, our student counts are going to stay about the level. Uh, most likely we're going to continue to see decreases for some times, like just about every other district in the state. Uh, so that's something that we had to be thinking about in the budget process. Uh, here, need factors, so this is where those weighted, uh, membership numbers from, from, uh, different uh, different students are weighted differently in the funding formula. So say K is level one, uh, grades, uh, students experiencing poverty are weighted about two, students, uh, English language learner, or multilingual learners, uh, are weighting about two half. Um, and so why are our numbers, are the weighted numbers so much greater than the actual number of students? Because look at this, uh, about seventy-four percent of our students are experiencing poverty. And about thirty percent are multilingual learners. And it gets real complicated because of course there's a lot of crossover on those numbers. And then, uh, like forty-four percent are, um, uh, special education, our, our I E P is, as I said, uh, individual education plan. Yeah, there's a lot of abbreviations in here, I apologize for that. Um, but yeah, so we have, we have a lot of students with a lot of their community needs and the weights, uh, are meant for that. Uh, so this is the tax rate I was talking about, so for years, it went up as we invested more than we ever had before in, uh, in our schools. And then with those changes in weights, finally, finally comes the relief. But you didn't get to experience that, and I know that, I know that, we did, we looked at the numbers, we got the, 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 uh, homestead rate. Uh, grandlets from the city and, and actually broke out the numbers and it is, it's something like sixty percent of single family owners on their sudden eleven percent increase or more on their final tax bill. Uh, even though again, that tax rate dropped ninety cents. So that's why again, we tried to be really, really cautious this year. And so hopefully, if everything stays the same, the state, which it never does, but hope your tax rate will drop about one cent, uh, with the budget that we've put together this year. Uh, weirdly, that does, doesn't translate, when we talk about the per pupil cost, which actually will translate in increase and you'll see that, this is very important, uh, because this is what the legislature now requires them to put on the ballot. So tomorrow when you get your ballot, if you haven't already listened to the ballot, it'll tell you this, and it'll say, oh, increase thirteen percent, even though the budget that we have passed is only about four point one three percent. But this is shift in the weighting. This is, this is, uh, what the per pupil cost has been, and again, that's weighted pupil. More context, uh, we're going to bring this up a lot, because there's a lot in the news about how, how Vermont students are struggling, uh, to bounce back from the pandemic. Um, and these, these aren't the most, most reason, but we've been talking about this a lot this year, because what this shows is that the most grade levels at our school, even though, uh, our students are, are still performing below, state average, just about every grade level saw increases year over year. So something we're doing seems to actually be working, good. This is another piece of context, this shows, uh, special, uh, state revenues for special education over the past, uh, ten years or so. Um, and you can see since Act one seventy-three, our expenses, uh, for special education, it's increased while we're getting, uh, indirect state revenues, state and state are dropped off. So this is a significant gap we have to pick up. And here we go, here's the number, here's what we're all here, really. This is the budget we settled on, four point one three percent. Little context on how, some more context, that's what I'm here for. Uh, on how we got there, we asked the staff for three budgets, first started in, 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 uh, zero percent increase. A, uh, 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 an inflationary increase. Or there was an inflationary decrease, level funding and a, uh, level services, like level services. So level services is originally intended would have been about a seven point percent increase. Um, so after seven, eight meetings, uh, got, got to a place somewhere in between. Um, these things here are the right ones, not costs that we just had to absorb. These are not things that we really had a lot of control over. Uh, we, we need to put aside about three hundred thousand dollars in debt reserves, something where USDA wants us to do a nice new building, so that it doesn't fall down before we pay them off, just about twenty years away. Um, and you'll see that on your ballot, uh, because we had to vote on that separately. It won't change that top number, whether you vote for that or not, we just need, uh, thumbs up to the city that we create that separate fund for residents. Uh, so that's something we've been required to do, we, the more abbreviation. I D O V is special education funding from the federal government that we're anticipating about three hundred thousand dollars less than we had hoped for. So that's money that we have to absorb because that's the classic, uh, undefined mandate, we have to provide those services, whether or not the government, government actually gets us money. So that's three hundred thousand dollars we had absorbed. Twelve percent already, already guard about, doesn't turn to ninety, we're on about it for years. Uh, twelve percent increase this year, this is the third year in a row that that number has been more than ten percent. Uh, that's four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars we had to be absorbed. Uh, negotiated salary increases, uh, increases in the running, running this building. Uh, it's a bigger, nicer, fancier building and, uh, year, year, we're learning how much more that costs than anything. Uh, and, uh, some additional reserve funds related to that. So how did we get it down from seven point two percent to four point one three percent? Staff has told us that these reductions are doable without the major reduction of the services are, are what we're able to provide here at school. Um, but we are talking about two staff reductions in the elementary, two staff reductions in middle school. Reduction of, of some contracted special education services. Uh, staff reductions in operations, I think, some of these are, um, potentially going to be layoffs. Uh, some of these are just people who are retiring and those positions are being filled, some of these positions that are unbuilt. Uh, but you know, if we go, go way back and look at those student numbers, if you have cognitive, you have to run, run those, we'll just put the number of students that we had. I'm going really fast, any questions? All right. Uh, so what does that mean? Again, that's, it's about a four point one three percent increase overall in budget. Here's, um, some really, really concrete numbers, the weighted pupils again, uh, went down a little bit, which is really strange because the actual physical number of students in the building came up a little bit this year. Uh, because the pre-K program came online fully. Uh, but somehow the weighted number went down, and that was a long how and forth with the state to finally get a number. Uh, and that's where we, but, but, so increase, decrease in students. Means that, means that thirteen percent increase in per pupil cost. Which, after a long formula, which we didn't put up here this year, but if you were one, I can, I can, you know, if you got a few hours, I'll sit down with you and we'll go through the formula. Uh, maybe take count one again, before you do. So we have formula, we get that one point two five, uh, homestead rate, uh, one cent increase from last year. And for income sensitive parking tax rate goes down to about two percent of budgets. And the numbers we found without the state, I can't stress enough, number of numbers we grabbed without the state because those were never set, those numbers are the legislature, uh, just done in May, probably May. And that's more true than ever this year because they are considering all sorts of potential different changes this year, so it's something to be aware of, yeah.
To make it abundantly clear. That would be like a tiny decrease on someone's tax bill, right?
That's correct, and there is no repraisal this year in through a tax law. So a decrease is a decrease, the next slide, the document shows, um, projected tax for the school side of your bill, which is the right side of your bill. Uh, so just to underline what the mayor is going to put out earlier, so for the four hundred thousand dollar, uh, assessed value, that's the range of the average home, uh, home assessment value for the city. So your average, uh, household will see a forty dollar decrease in their, uh, which is phenomenal. And then the next slide actually talks about the impact of tax rates after tax credit, so income sensitive bills, um, so anywhere from your household income in forty K, four hundred and twenty K. You can see anywhere from a sixty-eight dollar to a two hundred or four dollar decrease. And that's one of the things I wonder the legislature is looking at, is potential changes and how this formula works, changing that top level and that nature. Yeah, so the income sensitivity is the one, you know, that, that's when, when a household makes less than certain amount of money in a year, a hundred thousand dollars is the cap on that. Uh, that's your H I, H I one forty-four form of taxes. Um, if you make less than certain number for your household, you potentially could get a break on your school taxes after tax bill from the state. And that's what, that, this slide reflects. So cannot stress enough, you can all make sure that you're filing the form, forms. If you literally don't know what that means, just hit me up, that's what I do for a living, and help you with H I one forty-four, no problem. There you go. Uh, one thing that's not up here, I just, you know, like we probably said for that presentation, I just wanted to talk about what's actually on the ballot other than the budget. Um, you'll see we're electing two school board trustees, one for a three-year term and one for a two-year term. Uh, and of our school district treasurer to serve a major for your three-year terms, because our current treasurer has to move out of the city, so it can be a different. Uh, and then you'll see, uh, some, uh, Article Six, which is asking if, uh, you to approve an annual stipend of fifteen hundred dollars for school board members. Um, and two thousand for school board president. And this isn't something that we talked nearly enough about, but is, as far as we're concerned, is an equity issue. If you think about the ways to increase diversity of voices on the school board, providing some sort of payments, so the child care folks can take time off work, whatever you have to be. Um, that is something that we all thought was important and, um, then of course the budget, and as I said, the three thousand dollar reserve fund won't change the final number of the budget. Maybe we're not the major group to open that separate reserve fund for state attaching. I went way too fast, so any questions? Okay, Judy.
Okay.
I, I did attend a, one or two school where anyone watched one. When you were back, I'm trying to figure out what happened with our pupils and seats actually. And then I read probably in DTD or someday someplace, um, that this year there was a change and we figured that out. It used to be the schools and the districts that figured that out, and this year it was the state, just kind of asking the state.
Yeah.
And maybe that was part of the problem.
Yes.
And then I also had read, or read, that during the pandemic, people didn't, it was a hiatus or whatever, people didn't have to we certify, submit information to certify that they were eligible for their services, but that sunsetted, so this past year that hadn't happened, people needed to submit information. I have no idea how it would have gotten out to families if they needed to do that, whether it was a good process or a terrible process. Um, and I'd like to know what's happening about what I read and what is, because it's upsetting to see that number drop. And I'd like to know as much about what I read and what is, because it's upsetting to see that number drop that much. It means a lot of money.
I agree, it was certainly a surprise to us. And the first one, I can definitely say yes, that was something that was brought up by, by staff. That it used to be the districts giving it to the AOE, and now the AOE is trying to do it themselves, although they're wildly new staff. And have all sorts of open transitions, including their main baby guy last time here. And you saw, not Sarah, Sarah, our business director. Close. Financier, financing operation.
Too many hats.
Too many hats.
So, so are we comfortable that this is an accurate number? Are there families who continue to get the word that they needed to submit to certify, and if they're just required by that, if that's the case?
I was seeing nods from staff, so I love to come Sarah way in.
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
It's not maybe very happy, it's a tax.
Yeah, I think this is something that more members of the community across the world should make more noise about. We are letting the agency of education get away with a lot of informality, with a lot of irresponsible approach of something that has real repercussions on our taxes. And this is a perfect example of that. We lost quite a bit, as you saw, we went down to two thousand and five, out of things that we don't know, because there's zero transparency about what's, how this, a lot of this is being calculated, they have to tell you that they are being very transparent. But the truth is that they're not, I would say this comment any time you ask me. And other, usually this happened to all communities across the world, but it was almost arbitrary who were the winners, who were the losers. Like Burlington, for example, we thought, oh, Burlington will be on the same boat, because we have similar communities. Burlington barely saw a change, so we're like, okay, there's something, there's an issue there, and we continue to go back and forth with the AOE, trying to send them out our numbers, questioning their, their calculations and that, but it was actually, it was nineteen thousand and something, first iteration, and we fought back quite a bit to bring it back to two thousand and five. They were taking a lot more of us. And so, but in that first iteration, they were already confident, but they weren't doing it right. Yet, they sent us at least two more emails in the span of a month apologizing for a major miscalculation they had done. That if it wasn't by accident that they found a miscalculation, we would have been stuck with a higher bill. So we have to rely on their goodwill to actually check their numbers, check their math to actually get this right. But we got to that number, which is better than the original one, but we're still not confident that they know what they're doing, or whether they want to know what they're doing. And it is, and I think we should be more critical of that, because it is a problem, it's affecting Menuski, it's affecting all communities, but we're feeling it locally this year.
For those who don't know, that's Benjamin Schaub, very young.
Yes, hi.
And just to go back on, after the AOE meeting.
Everyone.
Now. And for anyone, I think, who didn't hear the original question, Judy was asking about this weighted pupil number, it seemed that it had gone from being our responsibility to be the agency of education's responsibility. And we can confirm that that was the case. And also, oh, and that things that use her time or clients are a full certification process, a property designation. Now, now, since the pandemic, now, very much. And then just to lean in on earlier note, what Robert was talking about, the original touch of with the drop of numbers, it is a concern, because physically, saw a jump in numbers of our, our new student. We actually have more students than we did last year, a preschool program that was fully implemented. So seeing that drop of numbers, it's, I'm thinking, leaning on that note. Large. So if you ask anybody on the Scoreboard in the states, how they feel about potential changes that would call the AOE agency of education having more moral responsibility, we have concerns. Any other questions?
Um, Robert, you said, for our possible three thousand dollar reduction in federal funds. I didn't ask that through the last meeting, it didn't come to mind, but it does, you started conversations about further losses, or is that all we receive?
So the question was about the three hundred thousand dollar decrease in the idea of being, I have no idea what ideas they say, it's not Anthony. Uh, special education funding, that actually has nothing to do with current administration or any potential losses, that we ran. Learned about early in the budgeting process, like what they're actually getting. That's something we have accounted for, any potential further losses in federal funding means. And obviously, we're very concerned about that, being our eye on it, somebody else's. But it doesn't mean that we're going to do anything that harm our students. On that note, just coming back to the slide, just showing you spending versus the revenue for special education line slide, it shows you that massive gap of consumer spend, how much is allocated to us. We can't reduce the services that we give, because it is a law to provide those services for special education. We have no choice to, you know, make adjustments or anything that we want to, but we can't make reductions, essentially, we have to cover that gap, no matter what. Regardless of any additional legislative funding that we would receive, so that ends up on us. Yeah, and just to clarify this one, this is state funding, and Act One Thirty-Three, if I remember correctly, moved it from oh, it made a block grant, basically by pupil, by need. Any other questions? Judy asks where we got the projections, it's something called NASDAQ. It's New England School Sisters.
I said it last time, I was speaking.
It's, it's the big New England, they do this for all the districts in the region, it's, yeah, that's where that comes from. I think, you know, even paying a member's membership, you get all sorts of data, stuff like that. Yep. They look at like burn rates and preschool rate. And the next thing is for New England School Development Council. And maybe, maybe it's special. Google, but that is, sorry, we're not remembering. They're the chicks, I think.
That's all I got.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh.
I'm on the housing commission too, so.
Go back, go back.
I'm not here to talk about that, so, any, any other questions about this budget? All right, thank you, that's it. Thank you, guys.
To officially bring this meeting to a close, thank you everyone so much for being here and engaging, and see you at the polls tomorrow.